Alyssa Bouchard.
Present.
Alyssa Parks.
Present.
Chuck Melkey.
Here.
Carrie Germaine.
Present.
Jessica Lanave.
Present.
Jack Sayer.
Present.
Brian Sapanic.
Present.
Thank you, everyone. All right, I would invite everyone to join us in the Pledge to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. All right, we have a busy agenda tonight, and Mr. Heatherton may leave us for a short period of time. He has a senior who is being honored this evening, and he's going to go do his fatherly duties and walk her across the stage, and then he'll return to us. So if he leaves, don't be alarmed. We'll all stay here. All right, let's move on, and we have an opportunity for public comment related to agenda items. If anybody would like to address the board, please stand and state your name, come to the podium. Three minutes or less. Not seeing anyone raise their hand. All right, moving on. We do have a consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Support.
Jack and Brian, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in... Oh, Sue, could you do a roll call, please?
Brian Sapanic.
Yes.
Chuck Melkey.
Yes.
Alyssa Parks.
Yes.
Carrie Germaine.
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Yes.
Jessica Lanave.
Yes.
Jack Sayer.
Yes.
All right, and I would like to formally welcome Alyssa Bouchard to our board meetings. She was appointed last month, and so welcome, Alyssa. We are happy that you are here. All right, let's go on to the superintendent report. Mr. Heatherton?
Thank you very much. We have a lot going on as we enter into our sixth week of school already. Last week, we had our homecoming activities with the parade, the dance, powder puff, and all of those other fun things. I think the activity that the kids at the elementary look forward to the most is when the cheerleaders and football team and band comes down and visits them and plays songs, does cheers, throws the football around, and a lot of smiles on a lot of faces. We also had a very close homecoming game with a 35 to 34 last-second victory to take the Dragons to 6-0. Our last home game is this Friday in a crossover Metro League Conference game versus Corona. Elementary conferences are happening this week. Conferences were Tuesday evening from 5:00 to 8:00, and again tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:30, and from 5:00 to 7:00. And because of that, there will be no school on Friday, K-12. We do have a Meet the Candidate Night coming up, and this will be for our school board candidates for the four open seats on the board. This will be taking place Wednesday, October 26th, from 7:00 to 8:30 in the PAC, and this is being presented by our Schwartz Creek High School ITC productions. The students will be producing and streaming the event. Our candidates in alphabetical order by last name are Andrea Fick, Steve Greewatch, Nate Henry, Holly Jarvis, Chuck Melkey, Michael Osinek, Dave Schronowski, and Kimberly Winter. Once again, Meet the Candidate, October 26th in the PAC. Seven o'clock.
One more quick, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So that's 1.5 hours for the eight of us or nine of us?
Correct.
Is there going to be a question-answer period? Is it going to be more just a mingle unofficial, shake hands, and just ask questions individually, or is it going to be a forum of, you know, ask questions, answer?
It looks like forum type, because you may submit questions to community@intothecreek.com to be considered to be asked. So they will have an emcee of the occasion.
Okay, and who's that going to be?
Someone from the ITC team and a probably...
I read it, yep.
A teacher support. So I can find out exactly who's on that team.
Okay, so they're controlling the meeting, and at least on the question-and-answer part?
Yeah, they're running the entire event.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Next week, we have our first fall break, so there will be no school Thursday or Friday of next week. This is our first attempt, as we've come back from the pandemic, to create some wellness breaks for students and staff, and it's our first four-day fall weekend. So we no longer have to go 12 weeks to get to Thanksgiving, and hopefully that gives families an opportunity to rest and relax. Just a reminder to the board, we are doing pictures after the meeting, and as Carrie said, I'm going to be popping out for a second to walk Adriana across the gym. This is the girls' varsity volleyball last home game of the season, and so it's their senior night.
All right, that's a lot. That's some great things, and I know the entertainment value of homecoming overall is pretty amazing. So thanks, everybody that has supported that. Any questions for Rod before we move on? All right, now we have our student board representative report. Sir?
Thank you. All right, so just generally, as we were talking about earlier, so with this last week being homecoming, of course, Spirit Week was present in all of our buildings, with each building choosing a fun theme for each day of the week. That way, students and staff are encouraged to dress up and participate. Also, like Mr. Heatherton said, our high school pep band, varsity players and cheerleaders, and our mascot Fireball made stops to all of the buildings of the Schwartz Creek District to just say hi, put on a show for them, and just have a good time with the students. That's something that I always look forward to in elementary school, and I can tell that the tradition from the pictures has been passed on very, very well. So we're doing a great job there. Narrowing in down at the high school, the Schwartz Creek High School ITC class is going to be live streaming the Meet the Candidate Night. It's going to give the high school students a chance to explore the areas of how live streaming works versus doing a regular newscast livestream. This is going to be more of on-demand, working with equipment and cameras to produce a video that will effectively show the candidate night as effectively and professionally as possible. So that's going to be a great opportunity for our high school students there. Our varsity football team has finished their regular season with an overall 6-1 score, taking home the most recent win on Friday with the homecoming game, and the Schwartz Creek Magicals also sang the National Anthem live at Friday's game, as they do annually. The Schwartz Creek Marching Band went to Goodrich last night to go to band festival, and they earned the highest possible score of straight ones across the board. Going down to our middle school on Friday of this week, the middle school PTO are going to be putting on a Schwartz Creek Spooky Trails Night, where students and parents get a discount at the front gate to enjoy all three tracks available at the Halloween-themed park. The middle school will also be holding a fundraiser tomorrow at Lorenzo's Pizza, and a percentage of all the money made from orders between 3:00 PM and 8:00 PM will go towards the SMS PTO, which will in turn go towards the students for field trips, class activities, pretty much all the fun stuff that kids look forward to in school. These fundraisers that are going on are extremely, extremely beneficial to anything that the classes would like to pursue. Down to our elementary level, Deke Elementary held a Wear Pink Day today in support of spreading awareness and helping to fight cancer. Elementary parent-teacher conferences are happening this week to allow students, parents, and teachers to sit down one-on-one to recap their students' learning experience in the class so far, and if needed, to discuss methods of future growth to better the students' learning experience in the classroom. And finally, Gaines Elementary is going to be holding a sock drive for the entirety of October. The drive, of course, cleverly named Socktober, encourages students to bring in a new pair of socks of all shapes and sizes, which will be donated to local families that are in need. And that's all I've got for this report.
I thank you, sir. Any questions?
Of course.
One, the ITC, are they going to that livestream, are they going to announce it to the community, or are they going to get the word out so the community can tune in?
Yes, Mr. Gillette is working with the ITC crew to spread the word. I know they're going to be posting it publicly on social media. I have already seen it a couple places out. I know they've posted something on Instagram about it, and I know there are plans to make sure to get it out to the community as effectively as possible. That way, we can have a good audience for it. We can get as much as participation as we can, and just overall make it a really, really nice event.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
You don't happen to know who's emceeing it, do you?
Don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure the student, there's going to be a student and teacher who are emceeing. I believe the student is high school senior Emma Klasbell, and the teacher, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I know it will be definitely 100% a senior student and a teacher doing it.
Sounds great. What a great opportunity for the students.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Great report, as always. All right, moving on, we do have an informational item in your packet for employment, and then let's move on to the board's subcommittee reports. And I can start with academic achievement. We had our meeting last Tuesday on the 4th, and Jim provided us with an overview of district data that included the star early literacy, star reading, and star math results by grade level, and that was comparing 2019 to 2022, which is four years, but technically testing wasn't done in the fall of 2020 due to COVID. So there were no results for that year. We did look at opportunity areas and talk about the impact of poverty level changing on the district and the students and some opportunities there. The district MYKIP goals that were submitted to the state state that we should be doing 6% improvement each year. I hope that I represented that well for you, Jim, and I know you're going to be reporting some more to us later, at a later meeting. Additionally, it was really exciting. Jim and Rod talked about the targeted tutoring program, which we've talked about here, I believe. It's supported by ESSER funds, just like the libraries for classrooms and the summer school program are being supported by ESSER funds, and the district posted up to 50 tutoring opportunities for teachers, and they filled 47 of the 50 positions as of last week. I don't know if they've been able to add to that. Positions are open to teachers who are employed by Schwartz Creek District, and they're going to have 30 positions at elementary, 10 at the high school, and 10 at the middle school. And the tutors will have a maximum of five students in their group, and they'll do one hour of targeted tutoring over 10 weeks as a minimum of number of sessions. And then there's, they're in the works to do some parent and student communication and engagement. Additionally, Jim and Rod talked about some of the meetings with principals. We've talked about, you know, coaching principals, some of the work that's been done there, but also establishing building goals, so that any of the actions that result from those goals will be taken back to the student level, the principal level, and to support the teachers in getting the desired effect that they're looking for. There wasn't a public comment, and the board did thank Rod, Jim, and Kevin. Kevin was also there for their leadership and continued commitment to our students and staff. The next meeting is scheduled for November 4th, and we adjourned at 8:30. Are there any questions?
I just have one, carry off subject maybe a little bit. When you guys meet, and I know I don't go to curriculum, subcommittee, when they choose books for the libraries, does the curriculum person approve those before they're allowed to go into the libraries, or is that done by principals, or...
I'll defer to Mr. Kitchen.
I would just like to know that, because I see some of the things going on in our other communities, and I just want to know exactly who's responsible for that.
Yes, it's an interesting topic for sure. When the books come in, they are previewed, but there's no real process outside of deciding which ones go. We do have processes for complainants, but if the books come in, pretty much they're approved and go to the shelf.
Who approves them? You?
No, well, it would be a principal at each building, yes.
Okay. All right, that's what I want to know. Thank you. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to who's next. Finance.
Jessica.
Oh, I'm stealing your thunder. There you go.
Your turn.
I don't even need a report, because she puts it all in her stuff.
Okay, we met on, what day was that? Monday, October 3rd.
I really should go follow. I was there first.
I know you were. I did arrive late to the building and operations. Okay, back on track. Attending were myself, Chuck Melkey, Brian Sapanic, Rod Heatherton, Chris Gray, Jim Kitchen, RC Hunt, and Jim, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, from Lewis and Uff. Oh, that's right. Oh, okay, I'm not going to try to spell it right now. Okay. Back on track to the agenda items. Cash and investment summary. We reviewed the report as of 8:31:22 with no issues. That summary is, as of 8:31:22, the general fund is $6,406,907.90. The sinking fund is $1,811,000. Oh, I just told myself I did really well with that. $855.67. Food service, $719,630.11. The student activity fund is $268,327.26. The debt service is $1,495,439.91. The bond capital project fund is $8,058,792.26, and leaving our total cash and investments at $18,760,953.11. The check register review was not reviewed. For the current month, we had no issues from previous months. Bids and quotes were PO in the amount of $8,737.35 for the bus garage parking lot to be cleaned, filled, sealed, and restripped. We had a PO for $5,800 for the high school locker room for various piping and connections for back flow prevention. We had a PO for $6,700 for, in the high school, for the sliding window at the Welcome Center. We had a PO for $15,255.38 for wrestling mats and an agility ladder. We had a PO in athletics for $8,501.46 for 45 sideline chairs and a chair caddy for the high school gym. We had another athletics PO for $3,646.40 for inside and outside rugs and runners. I believe that was for the gym. I forgot my full notes on that one. We also had, for transportation, a PO for $6,750 for vacuuming out solid and liquid holding tanks in the mechanics garage. We had a PO for the high school for $7,838.35 for our high school class, where we bought guitars, keyboards, microphones, and headphones, and a PO for food service for $14,082.65 for a self-service refrigerated merchandiser and accessories for the high school. We had an audit presentation. We had an audit report from Jeff from Lewis and Uff. He presented our preliminary audit report. We had no material weaknesses or significant findings. I stole his thunder, too. We do have one finding, as we have in previous years, and that's our food service fund balance is high, which is primarily caused by delays in anticipated purchases. Our final presentation will be tonight, and the committee comments were, RC will have a meeting with our architect about the high school bus lot. We will review our previous facility studies at a future meeting, and we will move forward to the, I'm stealing your thunder a little, conceptual drawing for Mary Crepo site. I wasn't certain if that was your part or my part. And we will proceed with additional core samples as needed for the middle school. The meeting ended at 3:18 PM.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. I would like to move that you accept the report as submitted.
So moved. Support.
Thank you.
And Sue, do you want to do roll call, please?
Brian Sapanic.
Yes.
Jack Sayer.
Yes.
Chuck Melkey.
Yes.
Jessica Lanave.
Yes.
Carrie Germaine.
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Yes.
Alyssa Parks.
Yes.
Any other questions for Jessica? Thank you, Jessica. And Shaw.
Okay, I'll go. My reports are getting shorter and shorter, because Jessica puts my stuff in her stuff, but that's just fine with me. I'm not a good typist. So we started the meeting actually at 2:03 PM, a little bit before the finance meeting, ended at 2:34 PM. Present was, there was one typo in here I made. Myself, Chris, Jessica, Rod, Jeff, RC, Jim, and Brian. First agenda item was the high school gym is near completion. All pads, flooring, and all trim will be completed within a few days, and the locker room's still ongoing. They'll probably be in the first week of November, as we're hoping. Number two is Mary Crepo. Demolition has been stopped till October 31st. It'll commence on November 1st. It falls good with the DNR. We can resume as long as migratory birds have left the area. There will be no extra charges from the contractors for the delay, finish date. The delay date is now expected to be done on the second week of December. Number three, boiler startups. The elementaries were completed with no major issues, no costs reported. Sometimes this happens. A boiler for the high school, middle school will be started next week, which had been last week, so I don't know what's occurred there. Vinyl fencing for the high school lot. The fence was completed at the new west entrance on Cappy Lane. Car lights were shining on a lot than they were there, so we put up a new fence. This was done by Michigan Fence for $12,750. There was no public comment. Committee comment was, we discussed the Mary Crepo Field of Dreams. That's just an ad lib on my part. With some preliminary drawings to be done, engineering concepts, and I would personally encourage all the board members to attend and participate. So they're going to go out, and it's not a big job, because it's not that expensive just to get a artist rent addition and some preliminary engineering once Mary Crepo comes down, as I believe our original motion was that you at least have something in the books by March of next year for the citizens to see and taxpayers. And we adjourned the meeting, and the next meeting date is on October 31st, 2022, and I think that's a year ago.
And that's the meeting you're encouraging us to attend?
If, when they have the...
When they come with...
Yeah, a workshop type thing. And I know I told them I'm going to be there for sure, but, you know, it should be all of our input, and I don't know what date it'll be, but I told her, I asked Rod to get it started, and let's move forward with it, and the committee agreed. And I just hope everybody, if time's willing, they can attend and have input on what we would like to see there for the community.
Okay, yes.
This is for the Field of Dreams?
Yes.
Did you invite...
I coined that. That's why I decided I'd do it.
Did you invite Kevin Hosner?
No, but I will bring a cornstalk, if that makes you feel. I'll bring a dozen cornstalks that my wife has out on the porch.
Well, that's not Iowa.
No, you guys know that's my pet peeve, but I just, I want everybody to be there so we can figure out, you know, what we're going to make it look like, and then maybe put out a sample platter of two or three to the public and see what they like, and then, you know, we'll, we'll figure it all out together. But it's just, I'm just, I got big dreams. I hope it's going to be good.
So we don't have a meeting date or time?
No, no. When you were there, I think Rod said that, when we talked to RC, we talked about a couple, three firms, and get somebody here, get as many board members there, so we can kind of figure out what we're, you know, wanting, so we don't waste money or time.
Do you anticipate that will be a separate meeting, then?
That's a good question, Carrie. I'll check with RC and Rod, but yeah, it probably wouldn't be at a subcommittee meeting. It would probably be a separate, yeah, like a...
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great...
So as long as Sue knows when that might be, then maybe Sue can let us know and put it on our calendars. That would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right.
Sure, go ahead. Was there any update on the middle school air conditioning, or is that no, no update?
Great question, yes. We talked about that a little bit at the subcommittee meeting, but we actually talked about more at the bond steering committee today, which me and Jessica attended and Brian. And there was some outlandish costs on, with that, like anywhere from $90,000 to $180,000, but I believe we have some money held back, and we're in negotiations, which I can't really discuss, because I don't know what the extended negotiations are with the company that put it in. And believe me, Brian's on it, I'm on it, Jessica's on it. She's really on it, and she's not going to let it slide, and we'll come to some, hopefully, happy resolution. We've all discussed that people make mistakes, and we're hoping that we can make it something equitable and keep it fair to the district, for sure. So, good question, and that's really it on it. And Jessica, why don't you add something on there with it?
You covered it.
Okay.
I don't want to...
What else on the bond committee? I mean, you were there. I did tell Rod I would say some things on the bond committee, but I don't think there was a lot. Brian?
No, that was...
That was the main thing in the parking lot?
There was a lot of things they discussed and, discussed, and, you know, it's just like, I noticed that we're waiting for a lot of people to give back with those one different things, and I thought, wow, frustrating.
I will say this, most of the punch lists have been addressed, and in the last couple of weeks, we have some outstanding stuff as far as getting the south lot of the middle school cleaned up, having the contractor come back and do that, and...
Fixing the north lot.
The, yep, looking at what the repairs will be for the north lot, and the repair here for the bus loop here, to have proper drainage. Over here, by concessions for the high school lot, they're going to cut into the concrete rather than into the parking lot. That's, that's the proposed fix. As of right now, we don't have a quote on it.
Which we don't want to pay for.
So we'll see how that all comes out, and I think that's...
There was one other, the Morris parking lot, too, and that was more of a priority with the drainage because of the children.
Yes.
And that, that's it. That was another bond.
That's a great concern by RC. Hunt, our director of operations, and because he said, where we have a low spot and it freezes, we'll have, that's where the kids are going to walk every day. So we are waiting to hear back. The gentleman who was going to be addressing that was actually on vacation, and so they're, they're getting ready to follow up, and now that he's back, and see where they, how they move forward with that. We will have another bond steering committee meeting on, I think it's the ninth, the same day as our...
Meeting.
As our board meeting next month.
We should have some resolution on all those. But Morris needs to be done first because of the kids, and then the concession stands, so it doesn't wreck it. But thanks.
And just as a reminder, for those of you who can attend, Monday from 12 to 3, we have lunch and a board tour to go through all of the buildings that have been affected by the bond. So if you're able to join us, please do that, and we should be able to see all the wonderful things that have occurred as a result of the bond, but maybe get an idea visually of what are some of these things that, I know both of you have really been aggressively pursuing. So, thank you. Just wanted to remind everybody of that.
Thank you.
All right, last but not least, we have Jack with the policy meeting.
Yes, so Policy Committee was called to order at 5:59 PM. Attending was myself, Carrie Germaine, Alyssa Bouchard, Rodney Heatherton, Michelle Dexter, Jim Kitchen, and Kevin Clarin. First, we just reviewed the recommendations from the November 2021 and July of 2022 policy packets, and basically, we were just going over these. These are the policies that we actually came to the board with at our last meeting for the first read of them, but we were just going back over them to ensure that we did have them correct, as for those recommendations, which they were. And then we moved on to reviewing the July of 2022 updates from Trune. And again, this has been an ongoing process for months at this point. Seeing as we're up to July 2022, we're almost caught up fully. I think at this last meeting, we got up to 3,600, if I'm not mistaken, and a lot of these changes that we just went over, they were non-optional changes, so most of them were mandatory. There was a few optional ones in there. I think we went over about six different optional ones, and then there was no public comment, and there's no extra board comments, and we adjourned at 6:52. I believe it was powder puff that night, if I'm not mistaken. So we adjourned eight minutes early so that Rod could go watch his daughter.
Any questions for Jack?
This, this reading, Carrie, is this, is this from last month? Is this our second reading for this one, or is this our first reading?
It's the second.
This is our second reading?
Right, right. The ones that Jack was just talking about...
Right. The color coding, can I ask him, because there was confusion last time, remember?
Yes.
I was confused, because the red was something, the blue was something. I was confused because the red was something, the blue was something, so tell me.
Yep, so, we clarified that during policy. Basically, I believe Sue got with TRUEN, if I'm not mistaken, and asked about the green and everything. Apparently, the green was never supposed to exist, so it's just red and blue now. Red is mandatory changes, no matter what, we need those by law.
Okay, so that's MCL on the red.
Yep. And then, blue means that we had an option. And I believe if it's in there, I believe the blue means that that's what we chose.
Chuck, it could be that green was their internal note to themselves.
Okay.
And it had disappeared on a subsequent version.
Yeah, so that's why some of us had green and some of us didn't.
Okay, and I'll save that for when we discuss this because I was just concerned about the COVID, what color that was in.
So, COVID has basically...
I think it was in blue, wasn't it?
It dropped out.
Most, most of the COVID policies did just kinda, I think we put in place, this policy is intentionally left blank, I think was the recommendation from TRUEN.
Okay, because I see a lot of it in here and some, some stuff says mandatory.
Some of, some of the things that you're seeing...
Yeah.
And I don't know which one specifically you're looking at.
I'm looking at the blue COVID up here at the very beginning. Well, I can wait though, Carrie, so I'm not out of order.
So, so you can go ahead if you want, Jack. They were in place during COVID, but we had not adopted their policies yet, so we're still catching up.
Okay.
And so, it was there and then now it's not.
Like I said, this one's gonna be, this one's just gonna read intentionally left blank.
All right.
But thanks for asking that.
Yeah, I'm just, I was confused for a while. Thank you.
You and all of us.
Yeah.
So, all right. Any other questions for Jack on policy?
Good now.
All right. Hearing none, I do believe that we are now ready for our audit presentation. Chris?
Hi, everyone. I'm Alan Gamble from Lewis &amp; Oph. I'm an audit manager here. Came out with a partner's job, Jeff Sobolich, today to give you the presentation for the audit. Jessica already did a great job giving over a recap, so I'll do the short version here. But so, you guys should all have this presentation packet here. Start on page two where you provide the auditor's opinion and just see in the financial statements, the district received a clean unmodified audit opinion, which is the best assurance that you guys can get. We didn't have any findings in the financial statement audit, no control issues to report. And as Jessica mentioned, you guys do have the excess food service fund balance issue, but since you did receive a waiver from the MDE, you won't see that in the financial statements. This is kind of a background thing and guys got the spin down plan in place. And obviously, a lot of school districts have this issue now with the higher reimbursement rates and the every student eating free for all of '21, '22. So, nothing there. And then, and also, you guys adopted GAZB 87 this year as a new accounting standard for leases. So, it's just kind of a different treatment for leases. There's now asset and liability on your government-wide financials. And then, if you guys have new leases going forward, you will have to budget for the lease proceeds at the beginning of the lease. So, it's always a thing to look out for if you guys do lease new copiers or equipment in the future. And at one of these back pages, we'll show you the amount that we do have in capital leases. Going on to page three, a single audit of federal funds was performed as always, as you guys have over 750,000 in federal funds. A single audit is required. And this year, we tested your ESER funds that represented about 34% of your 6.6 million in federal funds. And that, so it was about $2.2 million. And there's a little bit of ESER I spending left that you guys had, ESER II, III, and gear. That's all consisted as part of that testing where we review the transactions, any payroll expenses charged at grant, take sample and look through it. And again, we had no findings or issues and no controlled efficiencies to report in the single audit. Going to page four is this kind of as of a 630 analysis of your change in fund balances. I know Jessica kinda gave a update of your kind of balances as they stand more currently now, but looking at your general fund, you had approximately $44 million in revenue, 43 in expenses for a net change of approximately $1 million. And you have an ending fund balance of $7.6 million at 630. And that represents 17.8% of your expenditures. And the next tab over, column over, I should say, is the 2019 Capital Projects Fund. That's your bonded capital projects. You guys had $14 million in expenditures for the year. And as a 630, you had a remaining fund balance of approximately $9 million. And the next column over is another capital project, that is your sinking fund, which consists of about $1.6 million in your property tax millages and then the $850,000 you transferred over from the general fund. And that fund sits at $2.2 million at the end of the year. You see, you see your debt fund, small change there, ending with the fund balance of $650,000. And food service, where you're getting the excess food service fund balance is currently sitting at $836,000 with a net change of positive $124,000. And again, that's kind of just due to the higher reimbursement raises. Pretty difficult to keep that fund balance down. Hopefully, this year without the every student eating free, it'll kind of work its way down and with the spin down plan you guys got in place, so. Going over to page five, we just kind of have a breakdown of your general fund revenues and the stream source. And up, looking up, so your property taxes, local, that make up about 14% of your total revenues. You have state in there for 74%, which is obviously your state aid and a couple of other items. And then, federal revenue makes up 10% of your total revenue with the other of 2%, which includes your, your transfer revenue and also just ACT 18, transportation services, other things kind of sitting there to make up that final 2%. Going to page six now, we'll just have a kind of a general fund expenditure breakdown of your $43 million in general fund expenditures, really just kind of breaks down by instruction, support, community service, how your guys' expenses were allocated through the year. And it's really no significant change from your prior years. It was a 55% instruction, 38% support, 1% community services, 6% other. Looking to page seven, we'll look at your general fund by object, kind of where your expenditures lie. And as always, the salary and benefits make up a significant majority of your expenditures. 43% salary, 32% benefits for the year for a total of 75% on payroll and benefits. Then again, you have 13,000 purchased, or 13% to purchase services, which is similar to a lot of payroll, latest charges and staffing in there as well. And supplies of 5%. Capital outlay was 0%. Really didn't have much expenditure out of the general fund with everything going on in your capital projects funds and sinking fund. And the other is 7% and that's your general fund use in the transfer over to the sinking Looking at your budget to actual exhaust, you budgeted for 44 million. Actual was a little under at 43.96 million for a variance of $95,000 under budget, very close there. And again, on the expenditure side, pretty similar, final budget of 44 million, actual of 43 million for about a million dollar variance under budget. We didn't have any issues with the budget, no excess budget violations or anything like that to report. And so, you had a change in fund balance of budget at only 2,000, it's actually of 966,000 positive. Going to page nine, now we'll kind of just recap your long-term debt as a 630. Have your general obligation bonds outstanding at $48 million. Then you'll see this note from direct borrowing and direct placement. That'll be your capital lease obligations I mentioned earlier from GAZB 87 at year end, copier leases outstanding and I believe a postage meter as well. And then, the other employee obligations for 221,000, that is your compensated absences for sick, sick and vacation times. Looking to page 10, we'll recap for your MIPSers pension and OPEB liabilities. It's actually went down significantly in this current year. It's the proportionate share of the MIPSers pension liability is 48.33 million, down from 70 million in the prior year. And the unfunded OPEB liability is at 3.12 million, down from 10.9 in the prior year. So, significant decreases there, which resulted in a net position deficit of approximately 40 million. And again, as mentioned in prior years, this does not affect your general fund or fund balance level. This is all government-wide items that every district kind of has this big net position deficit from these MIPSers pension and OPEB liabilities. And it's always good to see the balance go down and you kind of, the assets of the plan are kind of increasing, investments and just the changing demographics of your teachers as you get younger teachers coming up through the system is gonna lower this liability as they pay in compared to older teachers retiring. So, the changing demographic will change this liability from year to year, but if population's getting younger with your teachers, then it's most likely gonna keep going down. And last page, just wanna say once again, thank you to the board, Rod and Chris, that she does a great job with the accounting staff, gives us everything we need right away, is always ready to go. We never run into any issues and able to get in and out and within a couple of days. And it's always a good audit and we appreciate you guys doing business with us and kind of open up for questions.
Why, thank you. It's very efficient.
Awesome.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I have one.
Yep.
I know you, your firm does a lot of audits for various school districts.
Yes.
And we are currently at 17.8% in fund balance. I am just curious personally how that compares to what you're seeing and how much of that is influenced by the availability of different funds over the last few years or the flexibility in the way we've been able to use them.
I'd say that's, that's pretty comparable to most districts, right around 15 to 25%. I would say is that range we see most of them in. And kind of, I think it's pretty common for your district that right around that much as well. And I guess their federal funds, while you're getting that, it's not really gonna affect your fund balance because of increasing both your revenue and expense at the same time. So, it's not a significant change from that perspective. But yeah, 15 to 20%, that's pretty common for expenditures outside. Jeff, do you see anything too much difference in that?
Carrie, if we, what we've seen over the years is the fund balance of a lot of districts got pretty low, you know, into that danger zone, you know, 10% below, working its way towards 5%. Okay, so, now over the last few years, whether it's through whatever reason, you know, budgeting, contract negotiations, availability of ESERS funds, so on and so forth, we started to see that go back up. You know, that's been the trend over three, four, five, six years, okay? So, years that ran about 18%, as Alan said, we see a lot of schools there. Now, there are a couple that we do that are like, what do you hold on to all the fight for? Okay, you know, they're up there 35, 40%. What are you gonna do with that kind of thing, okay? There could be a lot of rainy days and those districts would still be fine. But, you know, again, that, the old rule of though was 15, 20% kind of thing. Most of the districts we do are probably within that range that right around. And, and the idea is, well, you know what the idea is. You're, you're here to educate people not to avoid, okay? But you also have to plan for attrition with student count, so on and so forth. So, yeah, 17, 18%, you know, we, we look at it in terms of time, you know, how many months does that represent? Okay, if it was 25%, it would represent three months worth of expenditure, correct? So, you know, that two, two and a half, three, three-month range, that's typically what we're seeing.
Good. That gives me comfort. And we were one of those schools that were approaching that lower number at one point and have come back quite a ways, but it's always good to know where we are in the pack. Thank you for validating that. Appreciate it. Any other questions? I want to thank Chris and her team as well. Thank you, gentlemen, but thank you, Chris. I know you work very, very hard behind the scenes. We need to do a documentary of the audit process because I've been through audits before and I know that there's a lot of time, hours that go into it and you guys do a great job every year, but thank you for the excellent report.
Thank you.
And I did want to ask Alyssa Bouchard, did you have any questions on this, being your first audit?
Thank you. No, no, you don't.
All right.
May I just say, sorry, I just thought, I wanted to say thank you because not only here, when Alan and I met, he interviewed me and then when we did the finance committee meeting, you're all very patient and comprehensive and I very much appreciate it, so, thank you. And they tell us what a great job that Chris and her team do as well. And I appreciate the integrity that you work with, truly.
Not to get too much into our audit jargon and technical lingo, but that topic that Alan brought up about the GAZB 87 lease implementation, you know, that was, that was kind of a thorny issue, okay? You really had to be on top of it to be able to implement it. Chris will read that. Can't say that about every district and business manager, not to, you know, I'm just tired. What, the reason I said, I'd say Chris is ahead of the pack when it comes to that, okay? Because it was an issue, some districts, like you guys take care of, you know, being the auditors, okay? They just kind of waited for us to show up and say, hey, we'll figure, you know, you guys figured out for it. Not the case here. So, anytime there's one of these, what we term GAZB, Government Accounting Standards Board pronouncements that come into effect, Chris is on top of it.
Thank you for that.
We, me and Jessica asked a lot of questions at the subcommittee meeting, but I just, Carrie, I'd like to ask him one thing, so I think the public understands it. Some of the municipalities I come from, they give us an A, an A+, you know, a B+. Just so the public understands it, they may be watching. You guys use a different term than like a city or a township uses or a county. Would you explain that just real quick for the rest of the board and for the public, the clean, unmodified, so that shows that equivalency of an A and A+ or whatever it may be? Please, Jeff.
Alan, you want to handle it? Let me introduce you.
Yeah, so I can, I can handle it. So, there's a couple of different levels to an audit. There's unmodified, clean audit opinion, where there's no material weaknesses. Kind of materiality is a number we kind of calculate behind the scenes type thing, don't give you guys. And it's a pretty low number, but then, so we kind of review that number by the fund level and at the government-wide level, say, okay, is your financials materially stated? You don't have any issues with your cash balances or anything on the balance sheet out of whack? Over that materiality would be a material issue. And if we couldn't get that corrected, then would it lead to possibly a qualified opinion, which is then that's the second level, kind of like you said, an A, so an A is like unmodified, A+, then so your B or C late grade is a qualified, kind of starts degrading pretty quick to where you can even get to an adverse or a disclaimed opinion, which you never want to really get there because then you're just gonna lose out on state aid and all kinds of issues. And that's more for scope limitations or stuff like we call that, where you, just the business manager won't work with you, it won't give you what you need to even reconcile the numbers, you don't know what they're gonna be, you can't even provide an opinion because you're so out of whack with everything, that's because they have to disclaim the opinion. And qualified opinions, they are pretty rare, but I mean, they do happen every now and then, but it's kind of like an A, C, or D, where you're unqualified, you're qualified as C, you're adverse disclaimer, you're failed and you're in big trouble.
Yeah. So, good. Just, I want so people know that because usually they do an A, B, C, or D for townships and municipalities. And since I've been here almost four years, I've always had a hard time getting around this and just so the public gets it, but we're at an A. I'll, I'll call it that. Good job, Chris. And that's, that's all I want everybody to know.
Carrie, just to add on to Alan's explanation, as auditors, we do a lot of stuff, okay? But it's boiling down to if you read the audit report, our audit opinion, okay? And our audit opinion basically says two things, a lot of words to get to this point, but it says, are the financial statements free from material listing or fairly stated? And are they in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles? If they are, you're unmodified. That doesn't mean you have a clean bill of health. That means your financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You could have a 70% fund balance or you could have a 0.7% fund balance. We're not commenting on that. We're commenting on whether or not they're fairly stated. So, as Alan was saying, once we get away from those two criteria of being fairly stated as determined by we make materiality calculations, which are gonna say, if we hand these pieces of paper, this financial statement to a third party and the numbers off in there, is it gonna change that person's mind on that financial statement, okay? And then, the other part, you know, as auditors, kind of by default, we have to know what generally accepted accounting principles are. We don't, we can't do the audit, right? We gotta be accountants first, then auditors after that. So, again, as Alan was explaining, you get over materiality level, at that point, if we need to make an adjustment, we go to Chris. And we say, Chris, if we don't make this adjustment, you don't get an unmodified opinion. Or we have to have a dialogue that says, okay, we're not interpreting this properly, whatever, okay? Not, certainly not the case here, at least this, this year, anytime we've been involved with, with Chris and the district. So again, we're not meeting those two criteria, fairly stated and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, then you're going to see qualified opinions, okay?
Thank you again. Appreciate it. Okay. We look forward to seeing you again next year. And thanks again, Chris. And please thank your team on behalf of the board. We appreciate all of you.
Thanks, Jeff, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I know you guys spent a lot of time with us.
All right. And welcome back, Mr. Heatherton. You, you did your, your duty, as you should. Now we are moving on to the comprehensive strategic plan update and process, something we've been working on for a little while.
Yes, I am very excited to finally be to this point where we're talking about it at a board meeting. So it's been almost a year when we first started talking about the concept of what a strategic plan would look like for us. We talked about just setting some parameters, what were our needs, what were the opportunities in the district, and we started holding some workshops. And from those first few workshops, if you remember, we came up with five focus areas. And then after that, we came up with goals. In total, we ended up with fourteen goals. And then in my first workshop with you on August third, we started to flesh out the action steps and the measures of success. So we worked on those. I think we refined the first ten at one and then the last four, started to talk about formatting, goal dates, and it has been a privilege to work on this project. I think it really sets the tone for the next five years, ties into all the things that we're working very hard to accomplish and sets some good stretch goals for all of our departments to reach. If you look at the second page, have kind of taken the goals and put them all on one page so that you can look at the focus area and you can see each goal and without having to really dig into the plan. And then after that, you can dig into the plan by, every single goal has its own page, so there's fourteen more pages. And I just wanted, for the public's sake, to read off our fourteen goals. So we have four goals in student growth and achievement, and those are integrate inquiry, problem solving, and innovation, STEAM at all levels of instruction, develop effective citizens, deepen social emotional learning for all staff and students, and increase student literacy growth at all levels. For financial and infrastructure management, we have three goals, ensure safe, secure, and upgraded facilities, support sustained technology investments and state-of-the-art technology, and maintain a healthy savings and investment with diverse funding sources. We have three goals for equitable and supportive learning environment, and those goals are provide equitable opportunities for all students and staff, expand cultural and global competency and literacy, and individualize and include learning supports at all levels. Our next focus area is family and community engagement, and our two goals there are expand communications and marketing throughout the Schwartz Creek community and increase collaborative partnerships with our Schwartz Creek parents and family. And our final focus area is talent management and support, and we have two goals, develop and retain Schwartz Creek staff and recruit high-quality and diverse staff. And so this has been a year project, I'm pretty excited about it. You will see that on each goal page, there is a goal evaluation date, and that's just when we plan to talk to you as the board about those particular goals. Obviously, all fourteen goals are ongoing, but we can't focus in deeply on fourteen goals in any one year. So each year has set aside two or three goals, and we will have teams of team working on those goals, and they will report to you throughout the year and specifically at the end of the year to give you an evaluation of where we are in terms of reaching those goals.
So first of all, I want to thank you, Rod, and I'll thank Ben and Jim and others who have been on this journey with us, but also the community, because we looked to the community initially for, to survey where their, their priorities were. And then we also has a board talked about some of the priorities and we organized all those thoughts that ultimately became these focus areas and goals. So there's been a lot of work, plus the staff has spent a lot of time looking at this, refining it, and then as Rod just mentioned, giving the, giving the meat to the bones, if you will, for the measures of success and then committing to the timelines that will ultimately be, you know, when we will get updates from Rod and others. So there's a lot of work that's gone into this. This is very thoughtful. I want to thank the board for their time in investing in meeting time and, you know, looking at all of this in between the meetings to make sure that this is exactly what we want. So this is your opportunity as a board, if you have any questions, anything that we would want to, are we missing anything? Are, you know, is this, is this what we want to commit to as a district for our strategic plan for this, this next five years? So I'd open up the floor for any, any comments or questions anybody might have.
I'll just comment and say it was a wonderful experience. It was really nice with everybody who attended as to how we communicated, how our thoughts came together. It really was a collaborative effort that, where it just felt right. And it felt, I know life is not about feelings, you know, just when something clicks, and a lot of this clicked and it clicked, it clicked with, with all of us during the meetings that, that I was at, which to me indicated we were, I think we were going on the right path. So I think, as you said a minute ago, for the community to know, I think it's important for the community to know that it truly was a collaborative effort where a lot of discussion took place. Sometimes some of us probably wanted the discussion to be a little less, but we were all very patient with each other and it worked out very well.
I think administration did a wonderful job. It set up the framework, the preparation, just the whole, yeah, the whole outline of what we did here. And then, of course, inviting the board to participate in this, there was a lot of great discussion. And we got to ask a lot of questions. Anytime we had questions, we just asked them. And I think, what did it take, six months or eight months? It was longer than that, wasn't it?
It was a year from the time that we just first said, let's talk about it, and there was nothing to it to this point right now.
Yeah. And I just thought there was a lot of exceptional information put in here to create these, these, the strategic plan. And I would like to thank everybody that worked on it, all the board members and the administration did a good job.
So I'll ditto what everyone else said. I only have one question, Rod. I thought we had talked about generalizing the Parents' Teacher Program callout under the collaborative partnerships, just because trying to understand what early childhood program may be the best fit, and I see it's still in there, so I just wanted to ask about that. As you know, I'm always focused on the early childhood piece.
Yeah, I see that got changed to a quote and a couple of those around it also got changed, so apparently that didn't get put into generic language.
I think in general, didn't we just talk about develop addition, maybe something like additional early childhood programs for extending da-da-da, right?
Correct.
Something more generic so that we aren't set on a specific program yet until more research is done. And I know it's under collaborative partnerships, which is just fine, but, and I know I'm leaving in the next few months, but I would encourage the district to look at programming that shows research impact on early literacy skills.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Jack, it looks like you might have a question.
Under the equitable and supporting learning environment section, in action steps in C, in the parentheses, it says eliminate programs or policies that segregate, track, et cetera. Have we identified, as, this is, as chairman of policy committee, this is important to me, have we identified any policies or programs that segregate? Is that something that we should bring to policy committee?
Tracking is a way of taking a look at students that's been in public schools for a very long time. And in tracking itself, you're segregating the population. So I think when we were working on that, we were just talking about creating more inclusive environments as opposed to separating those environments. So I don't know if we specifically have said tracking at, say, the K-eight level. I think that's pretty much been eliminated over the years. You do have some tracking at the high school just because of interest level and what opportunity is happening next. So you may have a set of college prep courses or you may have a set of the tech courses, especially if you're going on over to the GCI programming. I think that's more of a, in general, practice that's been used over the years.
So by track, you don't mean actually documenting or tracking? It's putting students or allowing students to put themselves into different categories of education or classes? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct. Tracking students. So if you tracked someone at the elementary and you said this was track A and this is track B, then after six years of elementary school, these students would get an entirely different experience than these students, hence why we don't want to track it, K-eight.
So putting people on the track is what that means?
Correct. Correct.
As for the policies part, though, just to confirm, we have not identified any policies that are written that do segregate in any way?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I wasn't aware either, it's just confirming.
Good question, Jack. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, just as you said that, though, it seems like that might be more of a practice, like if there may not be a policy, there may not be a program. But say I'm a counselor, I had this done to me when I was in school, they're like, oh, you're on the college track, so you should take these, you know, you should go these ways, which, you know, when you're so young or whatever, maybe that's not the right thing to do. So I wonder if it's more about practices versus policies and formal programs. So maybe add that word in.
Thank you for those comments, and we are going to, and under board action items, approve the strategic plan, and is anybody opposed to the changes that have just been recommended based on the conversations or things that have been brought up tonight? Because then those would be integrated into the final document, which brings me to my reminder slash question, at what point will this be rolled out to your teams and be available if community members have questions?
So we have a administrative meeting next week, and that'll be the first group that sees it, so we will enroll it there. I do have a plan to get out in front of all the buildings and enroll it at their staff meetings as well. We'll work with Kevin and Travis to get some tech links up. And then once we kind of put a group together, a committee, who decides to tackle those first few goals, they will then also have their own supporting documents or at least a list of who's working on which goals, and we'll publish that as well.
Okay. Sounds great. Any other questions before we move on?
We can, yeah, we can always modify this slightly, can't we, Rod and Carrie? I mean, I don't see, I've been to almost every, I've been to every strategic planning meeting, I think, and we were always flexible with each other on what we could do, but we had to come up with a thing that was kind of more pointed to give people direction. And I'm sure we're going to get a lot of feedback from the staff, and I don't think we're so rigid that we may not have thought of everything and figured something out to modify if needed. This is just kind of a guide for us to go through?
Yeah, it's meant to be a flexible plan, that's why it's five years.
Yeah.
It's something that we will continuously look at. In the school improvement world, we don't even say school improvement anymore, we say continuous improvement, because you don't reach an N where you stop improving, right? You continue to analyze what needs to be changed. So the document can be adjusted and changed over the course of five years as we continue to, you know, bring those particular goals to you at the end of each year for evaluation.
Something may come up, or we have to switch in two years, so.
Correct.
It's a living document that we can modify as the board sees, but.
Yes.
Thank you.
This is going to be, this is going to be posted on the website?
Yes.
Okay.
Three years ago, when we were sitting here, no one would have known COVID was coming either, and we have had to adjust. So similar to that, or if any mandates come from the federal or state government, we would have to likely incorporate those into the correct place, but thanks for that question, Chuck, because it will likely be a living, breathing document.
And you're right. I think Ben, Ben, he originally wanted to do this right before COVID, then we got it kind of shut down now that I recall that. You're right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we are up to our policy second read for the November twenty-twenty-one and February twenty-twenty-two TRUEN policies.
Yes, so we have been chugging along, working hard to catch up. As you know, we switched over to TRUEN last year from Naola, and we've been working through the new processes, who has been working hard to upload everything, and we've now kind of got a feel for how those packs come out, what they look like, what the flow is, the mechanisms that TRUEN uses to communicate to us. So as you know, we've been taking all of these packs through policy committee, and then once we get through policy committee, we bring them to you twice. So we brought this pack to you last board meeting, so this is the second read. In your handouts, you have just a little chart that we put together, just like we did last time, and I can just quickly walk through that. So hopefully that answers any questions that you have, and then you can ask other questions. So in twenty-two oh one, there were no options, but there was a section added in red about superintendent authority to take action. In thirty-one nineteen, experimental or pilot programs, this was an optional program. As we discussed at policy, since we do a lot of pilot programs in Creek, we decided that our recommendation as a group would be yes to adopt this language for dealing with pilot programs. In series forty-two oh five, hiring and background checks, you needed to put a minimum days of posting, and we said yes, we would put a minimum of three days for every post, and that's just the minimum days for posting. And there was also some confidentiality added to the backside of forty-two oh five in red. You can see five and before five, all of the new confidentiality language from TRUEN. In forty-two oh five, AG one, criminal justice, information, security, we needed to add who was taking care of these data pieces with background checks. And so obviously, we said yes, and we decided that it was best to add the title and not the name of the person. So the title being added to this section under A is human resources specialist. Forty-two two six is temporary COVID. We left that blank, it no longer pertains. In fact, when this originally came up, the further packs along that we got to had already taken care of it. There is no law in the land on vaccinations, so that is not pertinent, so it is left blank. Forty-six oh one, general, there was an option to include suspend students up to fifty-nine days and expel consistent with fifty-two oh six, and we already have that in fifty-two oh six, and that's already our practice. Student discipline representative, Mr. Kitchen now, takes on all discipline, eleven days to fifty-nine days, and as you know, anything over fifty-nine days comes to you as a board. And of course, up to ten days still stays in the school, as is federal law. And there were some red on the back of that one as well.
What happens when it's red and blue? I didn't ask that question earlier, sorry.
So this last section is fifty-four oh seven, instructional programming, which is new but optional, so there, you have to adopt parts of the program, but then you have to choose parts of what you're going to adopt. So yes, we're going to adopt the ability for parents So yes, we're going to adopt the ability for parents to respond to instructional and curriculum programming. And then as you read through B, you see that there's a first level of appeal, a second level of appeal. And then when you get to three, so B3, you can choose option one, the third level is the superintendent, or option two, the third level is committee. And the policy group decided that superintendent would be the most appropriate final stop and not a committee. And then C is another optional but recommended policy about how to handle library material complaints. So as you know, these things are all very popular right now and so we decided, yes, we would adopt this policy to give people a means and an avenue if they had a complaint to register. This spells out how they go about that process.
Yes, okay.
Any questions for Rod or Jim or Jack? Not hearing, or am I seeing one on your face, Chuck?
Yeah, I have several, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Yeah.
That's why we're here.
So let's just, well, I'll go backwards, the last one. If the superintendent and the parent don't come up to some type of conclusion on the appeal, I mean, parents can always come here and complain to us, I suppose, right in an open meeting, either at the three-minute general meeting or at the specific part of it. What happens then if something changes that we disagree with? Does the board take action then or is this a final?
So there are a lot of policies where the superintendent's decision is final. They can obviously always come to the board and talk about it, but as stated in this policy, it's a 30-day notice with a written decision and that decision by the superintendent is final.
And that binds the board?
Well, you can direct me to do whatever you want to do.
Rod, I trust you. What I'm trying to get at is if there's a hot topic button and it does come here, I'm just making sure this policy does not lock the board in from us not taking action. That's all I'm saying. I don't want to sign something and then it's, and I know boards have a lot of flexibility, but I'm trying to figure this out logically so I don't pin future board members, which can be changed. I mean, it's policy procedure, but me specifically, at least for the next couple, three months. And I know nothing's going to happen. I know you and Jim are going to make rational, logical decisions for the best interests of the district, but that's all I'm asking, if there's a, if something happens.
Well, the other option is a committee level, but that decision is final also. So you're either choosing the superintendent level, which the decision is final, or a committee level, which the decision is final.
Okay.
Yeah, I think TRUON wrote it that way so that every single textbook, paper, assignment, test, curriculum, first grade, social studies, reading, math, science, all the way up to 12th grade doesn't all end up here.
No, no, I, yeah, it would clog the system up.
Because that's what this is.
Yeah.
This is a complaint about specific curriculum.
Right. I was talking to Jim about that earlier with Carrie. I think you had stepped out to walk your daughter in the volleyball thing. Okay.
I hope they're really slow playing that.
You should've stayed for an hour. You wouldn't have to be dealing with all this. Okay, so that's good. The generally don't have any questions on temporary COVID. You left blank, so what happens if they start up with the COVID stuff again? Are we just going to address that when it comes up?
So, yeah, that's how it came up the first time.
Okay.
They issued a policy, so they would have to issue another one and we'd have to discuss it.
Right. And we didn't mandate any of our teachers to take a, it was optional, wasn't it? And then they had to take a test every week or something like that.
Well, originally it was going to come out as mandatory for any district over 100 employees, but then that rule got changed, hence it's no longer appropriate.
Not to say they won't push it on us again. Okay, we'll deal with that when it does. Hiring and background checks. I'm working quickly, Carrie. Bear with me. Hiring and background checks. So MSP does background checks on a potential employee, right?
Yes.
You're going to designate somebody to do that, our human resource specialist.
Correct.
He comes back with some felonies, misdemeanors, he or she or they, and whatever the appropriate word is. And then it has to be disseminated to someone. So what covers you and other people from that dissemination? Should that be in there? I don't know if TRUON thought that out because there's laws where you can only disseminate so much stuff through the, you know, the criminal justice network and you have one person in there, so should it be, or at least ask them, hey, we have to pass this on to Rod and Jim because they have to know this. Is that covered in there?
Yes. Just like with student information, anyone in the, who works in the district who has a need to know is covered under that need to see that information. So HR brings that to Jim, they can bring it to me, they can bring it to Sue and say, give this to Rod, so.
Okay. Brian, what do you think about that?
It sounds like we have a good policy, the way it's placed.
Okay. All right. I'm trying to cover our employees so they don't get in trouble.
Yeah.
This is only approved district employees access to and are using the information and applying.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but, you know, if we put human resource director in there and then they give it to one person and Sue reads it and leaves, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to close up the gaps, so. And then the assistant to the deputy superintendent reads it, his secretary or, you know, I mean...
It's a good thing Jim and I both share Sue.
Yeah, okay. All right. So if you think we're good on that, that's it. That was my concern with that, so we didn't release anybody's, yeah, that will get sued if that gets out and it was the district's fault and somebody read it that wasn't supposed to read it. Okay, that was all I had. I worked backwards. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. Anyone else? Are we good? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience with that and we'll be back in the near future for the ones that we talked about earlier.
Yes, so, yeah, and I'm, well, Jack probably already covered this in policy, so we're working on a pack right now.
Yes, and then probably around November time, we'll get another one and it'll be a constant, continuous update type of thing from TRUON.
Correct. Thank you, Jack.
Okay, now we can move on to our board action items, beginning with the approval of the 2021 November, February 2022 TRUON policy updates that we just reviewed. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Support.
Jack and Alyssa, Alyssa P. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the November 2021 and February 2022 TRUON policy updates as presented. Can you do roll call, Sue, please?
Hi. Chuck Malki?
Yes.
Brian Sapanic?
Yes.
Alicia Bouchard?
Yes.
Jessica Lanave?
Yes.
Alyssa Parks?
Yes.
Jack Sayer?
Yes.
Carrie Germain?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, next we have the approval of the 2022-2027 district strategic plan with the minor comments and changes that were made during this meeting. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Support. Is that Jack?
No, that was Chuck.
Oh, that was Chuck. Sorry, Chuck.
Yeah, I voted yes on the poll. You guys convinced me. See, I had some questions you got me.
We're glad we could answer your questions.
Yeah.
All right. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the 2022-2027 district plan, strategic plan as presented. Sue, once again, could you do roll call, please?
Jessica Lanave?
Yes.
Carrie Germain?
Yes.
Alyssa Parks?
Yes.
Chuck Malki?
Yes.
Jack Sayer?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Brian Sapanic?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now we can move on to our public comments. For anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, please step forward, state your name and keep your comments to three minutes.
There's just two of you. Come on, one's an employee. Just get up and say something, Andrea.
Travis is here, too.
Well, he's an employee, too. He's working the console over there. Scotty's working the console, so.
Okay, well, thank you for your time and being here tonight. Now, any comments or questions from the board?
I just had one. I forgot to mention it earlier. You talked about how band went to festival and they got all ones.
Yes, yep.
I have not heard our band get anything less than ones in years.
Yeah, it has been very, very consistent.
I just want to congratulate Jean Murdoch, Ms. Murdoch, Mrs. Murdoch and our band kids. They're doing wonderful and they have been for years and that's just, it's a great accomplishment for them.
Thank you.
She's been doing a phenomenal job all these years. I haven't had much chance to work with her, but with the instances I have been able to work for her, it's very, very obvious that while she does hold her students to a high standard, she does also support them to that point where she can work every single inch of talent that those students have out of them. And it just shows at every single show we've ever done, every single show that the band has performed at halftime or festival, whether it be marching band or concert season, she has always just shown that she is able to work our students hard, but also be there and support them with whatever they need.
And I don't know as I've met her, but congratulations to Mrs. Stevens as well, as I've just been told that she's also a band teacher. So for her as well, congratulations.
And thanks for bringing that up, Jack. As the mother of two students who were taught by Jean and John, who were in college marching band as a result, they learned their love of music and the work that it takes to be at that level right here in Schwartz Creek. Thank you for mentioning that. Anyone else?
If I can just make a comment real quick with the band news. So with that great news, do we do anything? Do we push it out to the media at all with the ones?
Yeah, it's been on all of our social media.
Okay, all right.
I want to comment. I want to congratulate the football team. We got the news because we were in Grand Rapids with the Schwartz Creek Flushing Girls Swim Team who made it to Miska for the first time and the girls swim team is three. Yes, so I would like to congratulate Gwen McLaughlin, Josie Lanave, Mackenzie Harwood and Anderson Scholl. And the cool thing is, is that relay team is two Schwartz Creek girls and happens to be two Flushing girls. They really do exemplify working as a wonderful team. So I just want to acknowledge them and the football team and say, great job. And again, Chris, you may not like the spotlight, but I am going to tell you, you rock and you are a great asset to us and thank you for all the work that you do. I really appreciate it. I think that's it. And welcome also.
Anyone else?
Yeah, hey, Carrie, I have no comment.
Yes, go ahead. You have no comment?
Hey, Carrie, I have no comment.
You have no comment, Chuck?
That's what I said, that's why I said, hey, Carrie, I have no comment.
Okay. Can you, can you put that on record, Sue, that Chuck has no comment? So I want to thank the board for your contributions to the strategic plan, also the district teams that have put a lot of work in behind the scenes to put together what we looked at tonight, and then for the community from, for their initial input that really got us rolling and looking at, you know, what is, what are the priorities for this community and what should, what should we be looking at? So we've come a long way since we started looking at that data and what we reviewed tonight. So I'm really excited to see where we go with that and the reaction that we get from the teams and from the community. So thanks again to everybody sitting here because I know you put a lot of work into it as well. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved. Any, any second?
Support.
And comments or questions, please, Chuck, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. We are adjourned.